I am Cynthia Elliott, President of the Rochester Board of Education. We are here to convene a hearing on public hearing for charter school, Green Tech Rochester Elementary Charter School for Boys. The education law subdivision 2857-1 and regulations of the Commission of Education, eight NYCRR section 119.4 require the board to conduct a public hearing within 30 days of receipt of notice of an application for a new or revised charter school. The Board of Education of the Rochester City School District is conducting this public hearing regarding a new charter school application for Green Tech Rochester Elementary Charter School for Boys. The purpose of this hearing is to gather community input to provide to the New York State Education Department. The Green Tech Rochester Elementary School Charter School for Boys is set to open in August 2025 in its first year. The school will serve 150 students in grades K through one and by the fifth year it will expand to include grades K through five with a total of 510 students. Is there anyone to speak to this charter school hearing? Seeing none, this charter, this public hearing is now closed. So we have another charter school public hearing for Brick Rochester Academy Charter School Public Hearing, September 3rd, 2024. The education law subdivision 2857-1 and regulations of the Commission of Education, eight NYCRR section 119.4 require the board to conduct a public hearing within 30 days of receipt of a notice of an application for a new or revised charter school. The Board of Education of the Rochester City School District is conducting this public hearing regarding a new charter school application for Brick Rochester Academy Charter School. The purpose of this hearing is to gather community input to provide to the New York State Department of Education. Brick Rochester Academy Charter School plans to open on August 26, 2024 in its first year. The school will accommodate 120 students in grades K through one and by its fifth year it will serve 400 students across grades five, excuse me, K through five. Is there anyone to speak to this public hearing? Hearing none, this public hearing is, this public hearing is now closed. Yeah, shouldn't been over there. I didn't know you had anything to say. I didn't know you can say anything for that.
Oh, I sure can.
Okay. I adjourned it.
Hello, everybody, and welcome to the Rochester City School Board Committee of the Whole for the Community and Intergovernmental Relations Committee. Glad to be to be on and glad to see that you guys are listening today. Today, we'll be focusing on a lot in this committee meeting, going from some presentations from our parent liaisons in our parent group. Our student group will also be going into executive session at one point in the meeting and coming back out to speak about the superintendent's search. But before I get into and dive into all of the material that we're covering today, today was my first day going into my junior year of college, and so I want to give, thank you, thank you. So I want to give a warm and supportive voice out to all of our graduates of the district who is starting their freshman year of college, wishing you guys a healthy and successful semester. College is not easy, but who wants easy? And so it's necessary, and so wishing you guys all the luck. Also noticing that we are two days from the school district, starting our first day of school, and so I just want to give a warm welcome to our parents and to our students who will be coming into the school district on Thursday, wishing, yeah, yeah, yeah. Wishing you guys a successful school year, wishing you guys, you know, a school year of success, a school year of safety, and safety is important and the top priority, of course, and learning as we go into the new school year. And so I'm wishing you guys a successful school year. Wishing you guys a successful school year as the school year starts on Thursday. And today was the superintendent's conference day. It was great to be there. There were so many teachers there. It was great to see the love in the room, to see the appreciation in the room, and to feel the encouragement, you know, from our superintendent and from the keynote speaker and our deputy superintendent who spoke there today. And so everybody who was at the superintendent's conference day today knows how amazing it was, and so we wish all of our teachers the best of luck as the new school year starts. And so we're going to get right into it. Can I get a motion for the minutes of the February 6, 2024 Community and Intergovernmental Relations Committee minutes?
So moved?
Can I get a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And so also for our 2024 through 2025 work plan, we are currently still meeting and having conversations regarding this. This committee is is has a lot under its umbrella, and so we want to make sure that we're working through the purpose of the committee and what we want to do in this committee to ensure that this committee is effective in our conversations and effective towards our student outcomes, effective towards having relationships with our community and relationships with our intergovernmental partners. And so to start off today, we're going to ask for a presentation, and we're going to have a presentation from the most important person and most important people in this district, which is our students. And so I want to call up the president of the student government, Hazel Roberts, to come and give her presentation. You guys show her some love, clap your hands for her. Thank you.
We can hear you. Good evening, everyone. I'm not going to lie, I feel a little under the weather, but I'm here because we have things to do. Can we go, so he already introduced me, I'm Hazel Roberts, I'm this year's Student Leadership Congress President for the 2024-2025 school year. And this school year, we have a new vision and mission, and I personally had the opportunity to be on the steering committee that came up with these two, and at the time, I didn't know how big it was until it was here. Our vision is unlock activating dreams and unlocking potential. Mission: We cultivate a culture of academic excellence for all in a community of empathy, equity, and accountability that empowers students to succeed beyond graduation. We in the R C S D are not just students, we're dreamers, advocates, change makers, communicators, innovators, critical thinkers, lifelong learners, and we are leaders. The Student Leadership Congress vision wants, oh, sorry, guys, one second, okay. The S L C, S L C members of the R C S D provide positive leadership, powerful student voice, and outstanding service in and outside of the classroom in the Rochester community. We work together with staff, administration, each other, and so much more to foster a positive social and academic outcome for our students. Our mission is to develop leaders who positively impact each other and communities. The S L C voice empowers others and everybody around them. What are we, what do we do? The S L C is combined, come, ooh. The S L C is comprised of students from all the high schools throughout the district. We come together as a whole to talk about issues that mean something to us in our community and our peers around us. We make decisions, excuse me, we advise decision-making processes and various skills.
Just one, just one second to the public, we're dealing with some audio difficulties, but we'll, we'll be right back to it.
We work on policies related to service, equity, responsibility, and community building, while also encouraging peers to be responsible and setting a positive example. How does it work? Every month, we meet here at Central Office either once a month or several times a month to make informed decisions and talk about things going on within our district and also outside of our district. Students from each high school gather information, and we act as liaisons for each other in the respective schools and for the R C S D education. Administrators and communities review, observe, observe meetings and present, and present things that bring, and present information that needs to be brought to life in our schools. The S L C prides itself on being positive, strong student voice. We want to be the voice for the kids that don't speak up for themselves. We want to be the voice for people who may not feel like they have a voice in our district. We here, we're here and represent everybody.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Carl Parris. I'm the Director of Youth Engagement and Cultural Relations. I have the pleasure of working and serving with our amazing students and being the S L C advisor. And so the selection process, this is where I come in to bring about a sense of balance for the district, but with within the Rochester City School District, we allow the principals to select students who they deem are eligible to represent their schools with a criteria of good academic standing. The S L C was adamant about not having it to be an honor roll or a high honor roll, but we want from average to honor roll or high honor roll to be able to be a voice for the district. Also, excuse me, we look for excellent attendance and people who are demonstrating good citizenship and behaviors in the schools. And so once the principal makes the recommendation, I personally go out and I meet with that individual, and I explain further in details what this commitment is about, and then after the parents sign the permission document, then those students are selected to participate.
So what is my job? What do I do? While president may be a big title, you can put a title on everything, I'm really just the face behind a group of strong, powerful leaders who gave me the opportunity to be the voice, the face. I'm responsible for the execution of all S L C directives. I exist S L C advisors, chair and conduct all meetings. I communicate with the advisors weekly to stay in touch, whether it's through email, text, call, and also maintain a relationship with R C S D faculty from administration, so from administration all the way to the custodians, everybody's important. What's my job as the board rep? So first, I'm the student rep on the board. I'm the spokesperson and representative on the behalf of the Student Leadership Congress and the student body of the district. I write and present the S L C monthly report to keep everybody up to date of what we're doing, and I attend monthly B O E meetings as a requirement. Over this past year alone, the S L C has been very monumentous. We were a part of the Monroe County School Board Association where we, where I had the privilege of representing the R C S D at the county legislative breakfast. And the legislative breakfast for here in our district, we gave an amazing presentation, was very responsive, and I love that. And then this year, our former president, David Bouillon, and myself went to New York State on the behalf with the Big Five Conference to be lobbyists to raise word money for the district, and we received every penny that we asked for. And this year, Deputy Turner had us work in to get this survey out here for the climate and culture. And when I say we are on that like white on rice, yes, we were. And then now, these are our upcoming dates for this school, this upcoming school year, you're welcome to attend. We do have two meetings in September is to see where we left off and then how we build for the rest of the year, but these dates, other days can also be added due to significant projects that we're working on. And we meet here on the second floor. I don't know the name of the room. Thank you.
Thank you, Hazel. Can you guys clap your hands for Hazel? Thank you. As a student, as a student, it's great to have you here at the board, and we know that it's not required, you know, and and your regular life as as a student in the R C S D, but you do it because you care, and so we appreciate you for being here, giving a presentation, representing for for your community, for for the students of the district. I mean, I also just want to very quickly encourage any young person, any parent, to encourage your your child and the students to be encouraged to sign up for S L C, to ensure that that you're a part of a body of young people who are leaders, as Hazel said, who are leaders that are coming together to to really tackle the issues and tackle the the challenges that that you may have as a student. So parents, encourage your children to sign up for this program and for this representing group, and students, please be feel free and encouraged to sign up for the S L C group. And I want to very, very quickly, we're going to take some questions, so if you guys want to come back to the stand, if any of our board members have questions, we'll start off with Commissioner Malloy.
Hi there, thank you so much for your presentation, and Hazel, looking forward to a great year, really proud of you. Just a quick question about the, it's three o'clock to, or three thirty to six o'clock. Yes, ma'am. I know there was a calendar that that was shared. What room is that in in Central Office?
The Modern Learning Center, oh, the Modern Learning, the Modern Learning Center Room, it's the one with the fancy chairs.
Okay, that room, great, thank you so much. That's it.
Commissioner Simmons?
Yeah, just more of a comment, I'm really excited to have you join us, Hazel. Thank you for being here this evening to present some of the work and an outline of what the S L C brings. But yeah, I'm really excited to work with you and hear and learn from the students of S L C this year. You have a dynamic personality. I can tell you're under the weather because whenever I engage you, you're 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 full of life, brightness, ideas, and vision, and so I know that that will translate as the school year goes on, so get ready, get ready, get ready, I am. Bring us there.
Any other comments or questions from our commissioners?
Yeah, just want you to feel better.
And I just want to ask a quick question. I saw that some of the requirements for for the students to to sign up for S L C is good academic standing and good attendance. I was just wondering, is that some of that S L C decided, or did that come from a bylaw? Like what what was the decision around that?
So as a collective whole, when we were redoing our bylaws last year, we all came to agreement, an agreement that how can you represent the students in us as a whole if you don't go to school? So we came together as a whole to like, hey, you have to at least maintain a two-point-o, you know, does that make sense? And come to school?
That that makes sense, that makes sense, and and, you know, I, it's, I'm glad you guys chose that and you guys decided that, and I'll never come against what the students decide because you guys are the students and you guys represent each other. So I appreciate your answer for that. Do we have any other questions from our board members? Okay, seeing none, thank you, Hazel, thank you, Carl, we appreciate you guys. Next up, we'll have the Office of Parent Engagement to come and give a presentation.
Hello and good evening, everyone. Greetings to President Elliott, Vice President LeBron, and Chairperson, Commissioner Santiago, esteemed Board and of Educational Commissioners, Superintendent Dr. Strickland, and Deputy Superintendent Dr. Turner, and everyone else in their respective places. All right, so our R C S D vision and mission, as Hazel spoke about earlier, we're activating dreams and unlocking potential for students and their families, and this is the heart of what we do for parent engagement. In the upcoming slides, you'll see how our one R C S D mission and vision are woven into every aspect of our work in the Office of Parent Engagement. So prior, priority four focuses on fostering strong partnerships between families, schools, and community to enhance student success. The Office of Parent Engagement will support this goal by empowering, empowering parents with access to resources, easily accessible knowledge, and priorities that encourage active participation in their child's education. We are dedicated to achieving this collaborative by strengthening our communication channels, offering family-centered workshops, and facilitating meaningful events. Our commitment is to ensure that all families are fully engaged in the educational journey, contributing to the overall success and well-being of our students. So our vision and mission of the Office of Parent Engagement, I'll start with our mission, and that is to reach where we respond to the needs of parents, we encourage partnerships, we advocate on behalf of parents, we collaborate with community partners, we help support parents with their child's academic success. Our vision is a new vision where we aim to create a cohesive and equitable partnership with parents to empower every child's educational journey that fosters a collaborative community dedicated to academic excellence and holistic development. Next slide, please. So, the Office of Parent Engagement, our team. We have myself, Director, our Department Secretary, Ms. Michaela Wall. And then we have two teams, our parent representatives, which is Ruth Argario Martinez, Tiffany Bumpfis, Aretha Edwards, and Henry Hank Warfield. Our community liaison specialists are Maria Encarnacion, Jermaine Fleming, and Levon Richards. So, the difference between the two is our parent representatives, they are mainly located in our office here at Central Office, where they are our customer service base. When parents come in, they come to serve parents. They're there to support. When parents come in through the office for replacement and there's some concerns or schools' concerns, they're supporting in that aspect. Also with, sorry, I lost my page there. Also with phone calls, when phone calls are coming in through the office, they are manning the phone calls as well. Our community liaison specialists, they work, they have caseloads of schools that they work with and support our parent liaisons and homeschool assistants in the buildings. Also, our parent reps, they're paired with our community liaison specialists to help support our building-level staff as well. And how we serve. So, we love to have fun in our department. Deputy, not deputy, but our Doctor Superintendent Strickland, he mentioned this morning about being joyful. So, we are very joyful in the Department of Parent Engagement. We believe in family-friendly schools. We support our schools by supporting homeschool assistants and parent liaisons at the building level. We consult with them. We help them with events. We love to host parties. We throw a great party. We go over to schools to help collaborate with the homeschool assistance, parent liaisons, whatever it is that they need for their school. We're there to support and empower their efforts there. So, more with that, we provide professional learning workshops and trainings for homeschool assistants and parent liaisons. We offer conflict resolution and mediation support for students, families. We support and facilitate the re-engagement process. At times, there are families that haven't been in school, and we re-engage them back in school. Whatever it is that they need to get back in school and be re-acclimated, we're there for that as well. And then, community resources and partnership supports. And this is where our community liaison specialists play a great role within the community, within the department, because they're out in the community, building networks and bringing that back to the buildings as well. And then, I spoke again about events that we like to host and throw parties, and they're all family engagement-worthy. All right, so our partnerships with parents is what we strive to do in the Office of Parent Engagement. There are four different parent groups that we work closely with. That Special Education Advisory Council, CPAC. We also work with the Bilingual Education Council, BEC. We work with Multilingual Parent Advisory Council, that's IMPAC. And then, PLAC, which is the Parent Leadership Advisory Council. All right, so I just want to share a few spotlights that we have been working very hard with. And so, I want to celebrate and highlight those spotlights. So, our first one was the Annual Summer Institute. This year, our Annual Summer Institute 2024 embraced the theme Level Up the Village. Our three days were inspired by motivational speakers, including interim Superintendent Dr. Strickland, Deputy Turner, and Board Commissioner Santiago. The institute featured professional learning sessions designed to jumpstart our thinking and framework for the school year, presented by central office departments, community partners, and parent leaders. The highlight of this event was hearing from our youth, who shared their perspective on family engagement, offering valuable insights for the future. All right, so in a sunny, on a sunny day in July, we hosted an event. Well, actually, it was, we sponsored it, but it was hosted by the Omega Psi Phi fraternity, better known as the Q's. So, in July, on a Saturday morning at Andrew Langston Campus, the Q's generously provided over 150 pairs of sneakers to the international students of the RIA program, including those in the Families in Transition Program and IMPAC, which is Multilingual Parent Advisory Council. Another spotlight was our school supply giveaway, where we collaborated with our community partners, who generously donated resources to help our department host a school supply giveaway. Through this partnership, we provided 300 book bags filled with school supplies to students in grades pre-K through 12. The event was first come, first served, and within an hour, all of our book bags were distributed. A big thank you to our community partners, Center for Youth, the Faith Leadership Roundtable, M V P Health, Monroe County, and Monroe County Family Coalition. And last but not least, the Urban League of Rochester for sponsoring this successful event. So, in this slide, we are highlighting our key annual events, which will be our National Family and Engagement Conference. This is a premier gathering that unites families, educators, and experts to explore effective strategies for family engagement and education. This offered face-to-face communication with the superintendent and cabinet, and it was an opportunity for direct dialogue with district leaders to discuss school closures, address urgent concerns, and engage with current hot topics. Our Latino Family Conference is a celebration of Latino families, and it featured keynote speakers, entertainment, community resources, and giveaways. It was aimed to strengthen community bonds and celebrate the culture. Our Padres Complementitos Program. This is a unique program and an initiative that supports, it supported for last year. We supported the asylum seekers and celebrated the achievements of two cohorts, demonstrating our commitment to inclusivity and community support. Our next spotlight is Family Academy Saturdays. This is a new initiative that we launched two years ago. Last year, we piloted this program in collaboration with an elementary and a middle school. The goal was to co-create family-friendly event, a family-friendly event that welcomed both schools and public community. This initiative aimed to raise awareness about the various community resources and partnerships available within our school district. It offered valuable services such as health and wellness support, credit repair, home buying programs, and more. All tailored to benefit our students and their families. So, a few glows from the two schools that we held the Family Academy Saturday, which was at Ida B. Wells, also known as School 34, where we had 15 attendees and we had nine vendors. Some of the vendors there were Rick on the Move. They provided healthy and engaging activities for our youth that were in attendance. Another community provider was the Sweet Ida May Pantry, the Mobile Pantry, where they distributed clothing, shoes, and groceries. We recognized and awarded students with attendance awards and their families. We had a live Zumba class instruction from Jakari Buckner, one of our community Zumba instructors. The U R Medicine Mobile Mammogram Van was there, and they were given screenings and mammograms for women in attendance and within the neighborhood. So, on Saturday, April 20th, at Northwest Junior High School or Middle School, the vendors that were included there, and this one was family empowerment, so all things to empower family. We had vendors that included home ownership programs, life insurance, health insurance, credit recovery, and more. Again, Sweet Ida May Pantry, Mobile Pantry was there. We recognized students. We had a student performance from the step team there at Northwest and also Diamond Renee Dance Studio. Rick on the Move was aboard as well. So, a few goals and goals for continuing with Family Academy Saturday would include an academic-specific event. And then, we will continue to plan collaboratively with parents, school staff, and community partners. Our monthly R C S D Parent Group Meeting, this is something that we implemented last school year and found out that it was very successful, and we're going to continue doing this. It's our monthly meeting with parent group leaders, and it's designed to address high priority concerns and foster collaborative efforts. These meetings are open to all parents. You don't have to necessarily be a part of the parent group, but if you're a parent, you're invited to the table as well. It provides a space for thought exchange, discussion of action steps, and collaboration on upcoming events. Our goal is to ensure that parent voices are integral in our planning and decision-making process to strengthening our collective impact on the school community. The dates are still being solidified, but the time is 6:00 to 7:30 PM here at Central Office. For more information, please contact the office at 585-324-9999, or via email at parentcenter@rcsdk12.org. So, Parent Engagement Network. This is a new name, but not a new initiative. You'll see that our old name was Parent University, so we're transforming that. This transformation will focus on three key lenses, and that will be empowering parents, collaborating with community partners, and fostering cross-department collaboration with R C S D. These changes aim to better reflect our commitment to building strong connections and enhancing the support we provide to families and communities. We are actively collaborating with parents to establish a calendar of events that will outline the frequency and schedule of network trainings and workshops. These sessions will blend of work, thank you. These sessions will blend of work, of work. These sessions will be a blend of workshops and trainings from community organizations aimed at bringing awareness and access to community supports along with grade-specific academic learning opportunities for parents who enhance collaboration between school and home. Our upcoming event with parent, well, this is CPAC's upcoming event, and we're supporting this event as we do every year. But this is their second annual event, and it's scheduled for Saturday, September 14th. And it's at School 33. It's a resource fair from 10:00 to 1:00. We could go to the next. Other upcoming events, again, this is our annual Hispanic Heritage and Latino Parent Conference. The dates are on the horizon. We will share that information as it comes along. And then, PLAC is planning for, actually, the slide isn't here, but PLAC will have their annual full district membership meeting for the school year for 2425 on Wednesday, September 18th, from 6:00 to 7:30. This will be at Dr. Martin Luther King School 9. And then, Wednesday, October 16th, please save the date for the trunk-or-treat event, 5:30 to 7:30. The location will be announced. Calling all parents, we need you. If you're interested and willing to be a part of a parent rep, or to be a parent rep, I'm sorry, on any board committees, please contact the Office of Parent Engagement or the Board of Education. And thank you for the opportunity to talk about what we do in the Office of Parent Engagement. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much for that presentation. Appreciate it. It's good to see all the information that you're sharing about stuff that you're currently doing and the upcoming events that's coming up in the next few weeks, the next few months. And I also want to piggyback off of what you were saying and encouraging parents and students to sign up to become the student reps and parent reps for our committees. Right now, we need some parent and student reps for the committees on the board. And so, if you're a parent out there and you have a student in the district, you guys do it together. Sign up your child with you, make this a family effort to make sure that your voice is heard and is represented on this board. And so, I want to open up questions to the dais. Any questions from our commissioners? Commissioner Griffin?
Good afternoon, everyone. I have two questions. How many liaisons, parent liaisons, are in the district now at the schools?
So, to date, we have 39. Correct me if that number is wrong. But 39 homeschool assistants and parent liaisons together. And I think we filled all of our vacancies, so I believe we're fully staffed in each building.
My next question is, do you think that 39, if you, 39, how many is in each school?
It may be more because our larger schools are Edison East, and they have multiple homeschool assistants. And I think there's another school. So, it may be a little over 39. I can get you the correct number, though.
Okay. I'm just concerned that, you know, we don't want to overwhelm our parent liaisons. I know they play a very important role. They are more like a social worker, so, and deal with a lot of social, emotional issues. And I think that we should make sure that we are addressing the needs of our parent liaisons as we do our teachers, because they take a lot, they take a lot, and they take in a lot, and they deal with a lot emotionally when they go home. So, I want to give them a pat on the back, because they do do a lot, and they often don't get the recognition that they deserve. So, I want to thank them for the work that they do do, and I want them to keep up the good work. And I hope that we can give, make it more even-keeled with them in the schools to make sure that we are governing our children with more parent liaisons like the ones that we have and our parent professionals that are doing such a great job. So, I want to just put that out there for everyone. And also, my last, the last thing I want to talk about is the multicultural, the diversity within our schools. We, I see a lot of things with the Latino culture, which I am myself. But I don't see a lot of the African-American and Somali and or other nature, the Arabic nationalities or a lot of different nationalities that govern our schools. So, I am a little concerned that we are not addressing those cultures. Can you talk a little bit about that? Can you talk a little bit about that? In reference to what we can do or what you have out there for them? In reference to the, which you were just referring to, I think it was in your previous slide, Slide 20, I believe, where you're talking about the multicultural.
Yeah, the multicultural parent group.
Right, it's 18, sorry. 18. So yeah, do we, do we have anything like that, that addresses that, those nationalities that I don't see here or we haven't really talked about? And is there some, is there some part of that organization that is within our placement department that is addressing the needs of those parents as we are doing with our Latino community?
So when we meet monthly for our parent leader monthly meeting, we talk about all those things, like we're planning for parent-to-parent workshops, we're planning for other events, so that it's inclusive to all, so that we're not leaving out one culture or another. So yes, this is being discussed and we're, we're planning collaboratively, collaboratively, for a lack of better words. We're planning with everyone. We're getting all of the voice from our parents to see exactly what they want and what they need, what they would like to see.
Really quickly, the superintendent wants to add something.
Just to further answer your question, Commissioner Griffin, we do have the IMPACT Group, which is the Multilingual Parent Advisory Council, and that's an opportunity for other languages or individuals that speak other languages to get involved. We also have homeschool assistants in those other languages that are housed within the Department of Bilingual Education and World Languages that are deployed throughout the system. There's not a lot of them, because the numbers aren't the same as our Hispanic numbers. Our, you know, our Latino population is one-third of our population, so we do need to make sure that we have enough representation of those individuals, but we do have individuals within bilingual education and world languages that are sent out to schools to support families that speak Somali, Arabic, so on and so forth.
And just to, just to piggyback off of what you said, I know about the IMPACT organizations and things of that nature, but my concern is that if there is a lack of understanding of the English language, then that's a breakdown. And a lot of that is happening where if we have a breakdown, they don't understand our language to even be involved. So how are we reaching those, from our Parent Engagement Department, how are we reaching those people that have that breakdown, that would probably like to be a part of, but may not have that, have that language barrier? So those are my concerns, because we do have a lot, especially in our District 25, and I often refer to District 25, that's over in our Troop and Corn Hill area. If you go into Van Arker, you see them walking around. So if you go to try to talk to them, they're not going to be able to talk back to you. So those are the issues and concerns that I have, because we could, it could be a plethora of more of the people in that, that speak that language, but we need to reach them, because they can't reach us, because they can't understand our language. But thank you, I appreciate it.
Honored Deputy Superintendent Turner to respond.
Yeah, just wanted to add to your first question and comment about our parent liaison and homeschool assistance. So we are setting up a process this year of having an advisory group from that group, both in the representatives from elementary school, middle school, and high school, to really bring them to the table to hear of what kind of supports that they need as they do their work. So we are taking that very seriously. When we had our opening session with them, they were really thrilled to hear that they will have an opportunity to have an advisory committee that will allow us to really hear what they're experiencing and what kind of supports that they need. And in reference to the multi-language parent supports, we do work very closely with Ria, who does a really great job of engaging parents from those diverse backgrounds and also with those schools that have those high numbers. School 15, School 50 also has shared parent liaisons who speak those various languages, so they're able to engage those families there. And also, we provide a lot of our materials in home languages for those families, so that they're aware of those events that are taking place ahead of time if they choose to be a part, not only of their specialized group, but the larger parent groups.
Thank you. Is there any other questions or comments from our commissioners? Okay, Señor None, thank you so much for the presentation. Thank you for the work that you're doing over there at the Office of Parent Engagement. Wish you luck. I also want to say very quickly, I spoke at the Level Up Summer Institution Conference, and it was great to see our parent liaisons there to give them some encouragement. And I gave them encouragement, and afterhand, they came and gave me encouragement. So we built a big, happy family in the room. And so thank you, guys, for the work that you're doing, and I'm glad that I was able to be a part of encouraging our parent liaisons. I also want to very quickly give a shout-out. I believe we have two students here. Are you guys from the district? We have two students here at the committee meeting, so I just want to celebrate them. Thank you, guys, for being here. It's great to see you, guys, coming to our committee meetings and the board meetings. Share to your friends to come. Come to these board meetings, sign up to speak, speak their piece, you know, and just encourage more of our students to get here. So appreciate you, guys, for being here. Thank you, guys, for being here. What schools are you guys from? Early College, Early College. So it's great seeing you, guys. Thank you, guys, for being here. Okay, you want to introduce yourself? You can go to the mic and introduce yourself. Go ahead, if you want to introduce yourself. The students are the most important thing, and that's my focus, no matter what.
I'm Cherish Jones Carter. I attend Rochester Early College International High School, and I'm going to enter my senior year, and I'm also the Vice President of SLC.
Okay, give it up for her. Thank you so much for being here, and we're happy to see you, and we love to see when the students are here. Commissioner Simmons had a comment that she wanted to add.
Yeah, just very briefly, thank you, and I love your focuses on the students. I wanted to just commend our young lady today, Vice President Cherish. That's a meter. They had the ribbon cutting for Rochester Early College today, and she, you, cut the ribbon. And so I love to see our students involved and using their agency, their voice, and their presence to really effectuate change across the district. So more to come from you as well, young lady. Thank you.
Yeah, so thank you, guys, for coming. Again, share to your friends and to other students to come to these board meetings, sign up to speak. We need to hear from you, guys, and we need to listen to you, guys, and put action behind what you, guys, are saying. I, I want to make that as an individual statement, because I don't speak for the whole board, but you know, that's something that's serious. And so before we go into our next topic, I have to ask for us to go into executive session. Let me read this really quickly. "The board may recess into executive session to discuss matters leading to the appointment of specific individuals and/or to discuss matters of concerns with the general counsel." Can I get a motion to go into executive session? Okay, motion from Commissioner Simmons, second from Commissioner Malloy. All those in favor? All right, executive session, we go.
We are back and so we are getting ready to move to the next part of our agenda. And before I do that, I would like to ask for a motion to amend the agenda for Resolution 206.
Second.
Moved by President Elliott, seconded by Commissioner Simmons. Now I would like to ask for a motion to waive the requirement of the forty-eight hour submission rule required in the board bylaws, Policy 2300 for Resolution 206. Can I get a motion?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Griffin, seconded by Commissioner Malloy. Is there any questions? Any thoughts or questions regarding this motion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Pose. No opposition, the resolution carries, Resolution 206. Next on the agenda, we're gonna have some conversations.
I'm sorry, Commissioners, I'm sorry, one clarification, you did announce a resolution as just the motion to waive, but it is really like in two parts, right? It is the waiver and the 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 claim settlement resolution. So, just to clarify, the intent was to vote on both elements at the same time?
I think that we thought that we were doing
Right.
the resolution itself.
I got you, because they're both number 206.
The resolution.
I I think it's fine, it's clarified that the intent was to vote on both elements of 206 at the same time, so. All right, thank you.
Sounds good, thank you. That's my first time doing that, guys, and I think I did pretty good. All right, so next we're gonna have some conversations about the superintendent, the superintendent search process. And before we go to our superintendent search firm, I would like to acknowledge Ray from Great City Schools for All. Dr. Ray, thank you. Dr. Ray from Great City Schools for All, if you have any comments or presentation.
Thank you. To the members of the board, Superintendent, just want to say thank you for giving me the opportunity to share. Just wanted to come on and answer questions, I know that so if you may have questions about our work moving forward, I just wanted to let you know that we have put together a draft agenda for you, that a draft implementation plan of our work together that will go for the next two years, that draft plan does include consideration for your superintendent search and anything that you might need. We have also shared a few documents with you that might help in the superintendent search process that we often shared. Those documents and our work should not interfere at all with your superintendent search calendar or the process for doing your, conducting your superintendent search with your search firm. Both of those efforts, the board's work on one end and the superintendent work on the other end can move forward in parallel without any complications. I'm happy to address any questions that you might have about the, about our process and the work that we'll do with you moving forward.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Hart. Do we have any comments or questions from our Commissioners?
I do.
Amy, Commissioner Malloy?
Yeah, thank you. Ray, thanks so much for being here tonight and looking forward to working with the Council for Great City Schools and with our, the coaching that you are providing us over the course of the next two years. So I read through a lot of the documents that made some recommendations about conducting a superintendent search. And I'm wondering which calendar are you referring to? Because we've had a lot of different drafts of calendars floating around in the last few days. And it was my recommendation to my peers that we hold off. It seems like everyone was in agreement to maybe delay the search process a bit as we start with the start of school, getting kids back into school and delaying some of those early focus groups, et cetera. But now there has been talk of delaying an actual hire date until, or a start date for a new superintendent until July 1st. And I'm wondering if the council can perhaps provide us with some advice on the best timeline moving forward that would help us continue the work that we have been doing with the council and with our coaching on reconciling the strategic plan and academic plan with the work that needs to be done and the superintendent search. But I guess I'm just, some of the documentation that I read from Council of Great City Schools seems to be counter on some of the processes that we're using right now to select a superintendent. So I'm wondering if you can offer some guidance?
Yeah, they shouldn't be counters to the process. What I would share is that just follow the guidelines of your search firm. In terms of the search, we share some things in those documents just about acknowledging where you are in the search process, questions, things to consider, making sure that you as a board are clear on what your expectations are, what you're looking for in a superintendent, and those are things that we continue to support you on as a board as we move forward, particularly as we continue to lay out and help you identify the vision and the values that you have for the district, what you're, you've already established your goals, the establishment of guardrails, et cetera. So we'll do that process with you in parallel to the search process. And in terms of the search process, again, the search firm will help guide you in terms of start dates, the negotiations with any superintendent you might identify. And the start date is actually gonna be dependent upon when you actually identify the individuals you wanna hire, what those circumstances are in their separation, if separation is required, from their current super, their current school district, whether or not, for example, you might be hiring your interim superintendent, all of those things will factor into a potential start date for your, your new superintendent, so that we have start dates for our superintendent, some start. Given where you're starting now with your search, some have started in March or April, depending upon their circumstances in their current role or position, others have chosen to wait until the end of the school year. That is completely dependent upon the search process and negotiations between the board, the candidate, and the search firm.
So I guess, just to provide some clarification, the search firm originally gave us a calendar with a January or end of January start date, I believe. Was that, am I correct there? Was it a January start date? Okay. And then now we have a calendar potentially on the table for a July 1st start date. So moving everything back, the search back a bit, can you talk about perhaps advantages or disadvantages of, you know, a mid-year start date versus a end-of-year start date?
Yeah, I think, I think to talk about advantages or disadvantages, it is, again, as I shared, up to the board and the candidate that you ultimately choose, most of it will depend on the the candidate that you ultimately hire and what the constraints are around where they are in leaving their current role and starting with the, with the board. So in terms of advantages, disadvantages, it's completely dependent on the circumstances with, between the board, the individual that you hire. And in terms of calendar, I want to be clear, the calendar that I'm referring to that we haven't shared with the board yet is our implementation plan for the next two years of the work that we're doing with the board. And what I was sharing earlier is those won't be, those will be complementary of each other, our calendar or implementation plan and the work that the board will do in terms of the superintendent search. And we'll work with you on that, we'll have that to you by the end of the week.
Okay, and one last question.
Yep.
One of the recommendations that I saw in the materials from the Council for Great City Schools was in the superintendent search process, there were many recommendations in each of the steps along the way for outside counsel. Can you talk about why there is an external or a recommendation for external counsel? Because we have an in-house counsel here, why would there be a recommendation for an external counsel?
Again, external counsel refers more to the search firm that you've hired, any, any negotiation between the superintendent and the superintendent's counsel and the board and the board's counsel. So in terms of just the search process in general, just keep in mind that the board is hiring a board employee. And so the board would need to negotiate with that employee in terms of contract and other things. And so one of the things that we recommend is that the board, and sometimes that's handled through the search firm itself, or sometimes you can get an independent counsel, either way, but the board hire and negotiate with their employee through representation that is not the district's representation traditionally.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for those questions. Any other questions for Dr. Hart?
Yeah, I do, I have my hand up, Isaiah.
Yes.
Yeah, I just wanna make some points of clarity, because the way that the questions were asked were sort of pointed, but without the clarity that this district has a legal counsel that is both the superintendent and the administration, it is different from other school districts who may have either separate councils or oftentimes boards are sort of picking and choosing when they need counsel and hiring them. I'm personally okay with our, our internal legal counsel doing the negotiations. They've, all internal councils, even prior to Adrian serving, have, have done the negotiations. That has never been an issue in this district. The other piece, and Dr. Hart, you were not part of some of this end piece of the conversation, but I just wanna uplift that like you guys, you know, Great City Council of Schools has been hired to train the board on the governance piece. I just, and this is no disrespect to you and your team, I actually really enjoyed the training and I'm gonna be open-minded to the model that you all are training on and participate as much as possible and all those good things. I just wanna put that out there. But at the end of the day, we've been elected to do this job and represent our community and our voices and so forth. And there's this big push from certain board members, sort of cherry picking what you all are starting to train us on, some who have gone through longer. I personally don't wanna be involved in that, so I just wanna let my community know that the focus for me is going to remain on local voices, local input in terms of who the superintendent is and so forth. Certainly appreciate some guidance around the process and I wanna uplift and acknowledge that for some board members, this is gonna be their first time, and for others, this is probably like the fifteenth time. I'm gonna say that for present, not so much myself, but I just wanna put that out there. And so, Dr. Hart, I appreciate the work that you and your team do. I'm looking forward to the governance piece as I personally move forward through this training with you all. And I appreciate any input, but I don't want anybody to feel offended if we continue with the board majority in this path with the firm that we hired to guide us. We're like, we're hired a firm and then we don't even wanna take their feedback or their recommendations. We're gonna go to another firm we hired for something completely different. That's just what it feels like for me, it feels really wonky, so I just wanted to clarify that. And that's all for me, thank you.
Yeah, I just, just wanna stress that we are not, don't want to, we're not involved in supporting your superintendent search process in any way, shape, or form. Obviously, when asked from our districts and we get asked from our seventy-eight districts quite often, do you have any documents that can help support us through the process, et cetera? We share those, I've shared those, but your search firm will help guide you through that process, lead you through the process. So we're not here to upend or change that process at all. And I just wanna reassure you that our process in working with you as the board will, will absolutely take into consideration the timeline you have for your superintendent search and we'll make sure we work in parallel with the search firm that you've identified to help support you in finding the superintendent. And when I say in parallel, I mean, we are only in our lane, working on the board support, not in their lane, working on the superintendent search.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Vice President and Dr. Hart. We have a comment or question from Commissioner Patterson.
Thank you. So again, Dr. Hart, in the council, representing the Council of Great City Schools, first of all, I wanna thank you for, you know, those recommendations and the work that you're doing with the board. I think as board members and colleagues, we should be very careful when we use the word "we" instead of "I", you know, when it comes to, you know, things that, you know, we're deciding here or, you know, our thoughts. So we're all independent. As the chair indicated, he spoke for himself earlier, and we should be careful when we speak to make sure that, you know, we're speaking for ourselves and not for, you know, our other colleagues on the board, thank you.
Okay, we also have another comment or a question from Commissioner Malloy.
Thank you. Yeah, and just, we're having this conversation in part tonight, I just wanna make sure that we're clear on what the search firm brought to us. The original calendar that they brought to us had a start and finish by January 1st, so that was their recommendation. And now the board is rethinking alternative calendars for, you know, potential July 1st start dates. So originally what was brought to us and recommended by our search firm was one thing, but now we're discussing another thing. I just wanna make sure that the community is aware of what was originally brought to us and why we're having this discussion.
President Elliott.
Let me just say, remember, these are recommendations. Even the search firm is not, does not live in this community. And so when we go out, and that's the first time we had heard of the present, the presentation from the search firm, so that means that we need time to reflect. The community has also heard the presentation the same time that we've heard the presentation. I've been out in the community and there's been some, you know, considerations around, you know, the time. And so what I've heard is, is that, you know, we may want to delay it and not have it at that point. So, so keep it, I just want it, us to keep in mind, again, even with Council of Great City Schools and the search firm, they are recommendations, they don't live here, and so we have the ultimate decision based on the evidence we have from our community and from this group to make a different decision, and so that works best for our community. Again, they are, they're, both organizations provides us with recommendation, so I wanted to say that.
Yeah, and, and I, I wanna take some time to share, to share my opinion. I think when, when I watched the board meeting, we saw them asking for our opinion. Now, they gave the recommendation, but they were asking on where we thought would be the best. Like President Elliott said, we know our district the best. And what I've been saying about this, And what I've been saying about this, the whole superintendent search and losing superintendents is that instability is, is a defining factor towards the success of our students. And having a new superintendent come in in January, in the middle of a school year, in the middle of a budget, in the middle of a transition, is not stability in any way. And so I think that laying it to July is the best for our students and the best for our district, and that's a decision that we have to make. But January is in the middle of a school year, in the middle of a budget, in the middle of a lot of things that won't allow us to keep this district stable as much as possible. Commissioner Simmons.
Yes, I appreciate the conversation this evening. I do feel that we need to be cognizant of the middle ground and where we can, where we can lie, something that is balanced. It may not be too early, but we definitely don't want it to be too late. I recognize that conversation and discourse is the natural essence of what we need to do. This is what this process entails. So we want to be careful not to get too angsty when things feel like they're turning a little bit, but we want to be cognizant that we can't allow them to turn too much. So I don't know if I said a little bit of a lot or a little bit of nothing, probably more of nothing, but let's, let's see this search through and be cognizant of this, this timeline that we are on. We really want to be vigilant around how we are making decisions. I appreciate all the points expressed. Let's get the point of getting a superintendent in the seat and our district functioning, whatever that may look like.
Yeah, and, and I want to, and I know that commissioners have some more comments that they want to give, but we are gonna have this conversation with, with our search firm, and so I just want to hold off on the conversation. Is there any other questions for, for Dr. Hart? Any other comments or question for Dr. Hart? And this will be, if there's no other after Commissioner Malloy, this will be the last one.
Okay, thanks. And just, I just want to reiterate that I'm not advocating in any way, shape, or form for a January 1st start date. That was too early, even for me. The stability of our students is naturally important, and we want to make sure that there's a smooth transition. So I was not advocating for that, but I am inclined to agree with Commissioner Simmons about just some type of middle ground.
So that, the timeline is just one section of, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, let's, we have the search firm, we're gonna talk about this with the search firm.
Yeah, we, we have, but, but there's some decisions that we have to make.
Yeah.
Right? So we've got this sheet here, and you, we all were supposed to do it by Sunday of these particular points that the, that the search firm gave us. And so what I'd like to be able to do, if I could, is to go through this document to make sure that we can provide, the board can provide the search firm with our decision collectively, right? Okay? And so let's just go through this doc, I think I'd make it easier, but I think I overwrote...
That's what they're on here to present for.
But we haven't given them our decisions as a board.
Right. Uh, Dr. Joseph, from H Y is online to support that.
Okay. But I forgot, Commissioner Patterson, my apologies. I got passionate.
President Elliott thinks she's the chair now.
I know, I know. I know, my apologies.
You, Commissioner Patterson, if you have anything to say.
I'm gonna differ.
To you.
Okay, all right, that sounds good. Thank you, Dr. Hart, for being on, we appreciate you. And now I'll turn it over to our superintendent search firm, if you guys are on, to facilitate the conversation.
Yes, good evening, commissioners.
Good evening.
Again, again, I'm Sean Joseph, and I am a senior consultant with Hager County Tia, and I'm, with me is with my, my colleague, Dr. Christy Philippus, is with us tonight. And, you know, we look forward to continuing the dialogue, and I thank you for the engagement, the insight, the feedback that you provided in the last session. You know, as we continue to communicate and as Commissioner Elliott shared, you know, it's our job to give you recommendations and guidelines, but most importantly, to listen to you and to be your ambassadors, to help you, you know, execute a search that results in, you know, an extraordinary candidate to be your next superintendent. And, and know that, you know, we'll, we'll point out the decision points, but ultimately, you know your community, you know what you need, and, and the more you give us the information, the more we'll go back and adjust. So we did, based upon the last conversation, make an adjustment to a suggestion in terms of how we could adjust your timeline to give you some breathing room. But again, we can, we can speak through, it's not etched in stone, but, but just to give you a, you know, some guidance on, on how to, how to get this right. So let me pull up my screen here and see if I can get, get something pulled up. Uh, let's see here. Bear with me one moment while I get this. Are you able to see my screen here that says a Rochester planning meeting agenda?
Yes, we see it.
Okay, thank you, all right. So I'll just, I'll just scroll through here to get through. Again, I'm the lead on this search, and with my contact information and project manager is Tahera Vincent. As we go through, last time, we reviewed the, the actual process, and we projected the process, you know, a, a quick process, we can get everything done thoroughly, we believe, in three to four months. But that's a, that's a, if there's a, a need to move through quickly. And what I heard last time is that you don't have an urgency to move quickly, but you want to move effectively. So we took that into consideration. We spent some time talking about confidentiality and community engagement, and we discussed the pros and cons of a private search, a confidential search, or an open search. And just a reminder, in the state of New York, the school board may enter into an executive session to discuss specific candidates, their qualifications, or other personal matters. This allows the board to conduct interviews, to review applications, and to deliberate on candidates in private. We recommend that the search remain confidential until the finalist stage, where the board may wish to consider introducing finalist candidates to the community. And we had a discussion about that, and then the action item was for the board to confirm the confidentiality of, of the search. And if I can switch it, can you see the new screen that I switched over to?
Yes.
That says community engagement and confidentiality options?
Yes, we see it.
Okay. So just, just to walk through that, again, there, there are different options, right? So the first could be full disclosure of candidates that are interviewed. And then, in that instance, the name of all candidates being interviewed by the board are released to the public. What benefit does it provide to release the name of the applicant? Well, you know, the related questions to this option would be, what, what would be the benefit to that? The benefit would be staff and community members will see the process as totally open and feel the board as being as transparent as possible. Drawback to that would be very few, if any active superintendents would, would apply for your position. Stakeholders will make judgments about the board's decisions based on whatever information they gather on their own. Next, you can have the finalist names with community forums, right? So maybe the name of two or three finalists being interviewed would be released to the community forums, excuse me, and community forums would be held to meet candidates. In this instance, the first round and the second round of the process would be private, right? And then, once the board identified, you know, two, maybe three candidates, we actually recommend two candidates, but sometimes boards put out three, then they go to a community forum, and that option, the benefit would be stakeholders will have an option to meet the finalists and express an opinion of their preference. The drawback to that option, stakeholders will form an opinion on their preference and may feel the board did not listen to them, if a candidate, if you, if you selected a different candidate. Successful superintendents will be unlikely to put their name into consideration once again. And then, the third option is a confidential stakeholder committee involved. And in this instance, no names of the candidates would be released publicly, but the board would have a staff, community committee interview the finalists and provide the board feedback. And the benefit of that is, some stakeholders will be involved in the process and will provide input to the board in making their decision, which may provide information that would be helpful in the board's decision. A drawback to that would be, some stakeholders may feel the process is not open enough as they will not want to know who's being considered, as, as they will want to know who's being considered. Some members of the committee may violate the confidentiality agreement, and then, you know, make it something that should be private is not. And then you might have some candidates who decide not to apply. And then the final option is completely confidential. And in this instance, the board conducts all interviews and keeps the names of candidates completely confidential throughout the entire process. The benefit to that is the board will have the broadest field of candidates to select from as you select your next superintendent. The drawback to that is stakeholders may feel the board is not interested in their views, the community may react, or the community reaction may impact the acceptance of the preferred candidate. And if confidentiality is violated, it may be viewed as a board member breach. So this is what we talked about last time, just to talk to you through the different options. We think it's important that the board lock in on what the process is, because as we're working to reach out to candidates, that's one of the first questions particularly veterans superintendents want to know. Is the process open? When would my name be released? Because as we shared last time, you know, people who have good positions and are doing well in their communities, if they put their name out there, they can, it could be dangerous when they go back home. So there you have it. So the board does have to decide what's best for your, your community.
Okay, Dr. Joseph, if you don't mind, just so we can make sure that we have an organized conversation on this, let's just start off with this and hear the feedback from our commissioners regarding that. But I also have to, to ask you a question. Did you share this, this document that you're showing us now with us?
I gave it to Rahima, I believe on, maybe on Monday. But I can share, I can make sure you have it again.
Yeah, that, that would be great, because right now on board docs, we don't see that, and I think that would be helpful towards tailoring this conversation to have that.
Yeah. And if it's easier, if it's easier to, you know, take time, because we do have, we do have time, if I, if I, if we can maybe put a, a pin on this, we can look at the timeline and then come back to this, because you, you will, you won't have to make this decision, you know, tonight, but, but soon.
Okay. Let, okay, so let me hear from, from our commissioners. Would you guys like to push this back until we can get this, to this forum, or would you guys like to have that conversation tonight?
Yeah.
We just can go down line, down the line.
I'd, I'd like to pause and wait until we have that document to look at. Thank you.
Commissioner Simmons?
I was open to socializing the timeline a bit since that's of the urgency.
Okay.
So for me, because I was trying to find my list of responses for this document, you're not saying that we don't discuss this part of it tonight, decisions, and having to wait on that, because I think that we can continue to move forward with some of the, that we come together as a board on some of the questions that are listed here. Now, maybe whatever that, because I'm not sure what that is, that, you know, wherever that falls into this particular document, that maybe we can postpone that discussion.
Yeah, yeah.
But I think some of these other things that we can, you know, have some discussion on.
Just, just to be clear, that's, that's, it's just for this specific part, because we don't have that document at the moment.
Yeah, that's what I was asking for pause on, not for the conversation.
Yeah, that, that would tailor the conversation, and so it might be better just to postpone this part of the conversation as far as private or, or public, and come back to that soon, because the, the search firm does need it soon. Commissioner Patterson?
That's number four, that we would be waiting to have a discussion on it another day.
Yes.
Yes, um, excuse me. I also think it's important that the document that we're discussing here, that we can set a date right now between us, at the board right now, that within two days, we'll have that document back to whoever Rahima or whoever it has to get back to. So can we agree on that, since he's saying that we should really work on this?
Yeah, and, and so I think, I think that was the agreement overall, you know, until we get this document, and he said that we can postpone this, but we do need to do it as soon as possible. So this would tailor the conversation. I think right now, the conversation would be...
Or number four.
Yeah, whatever it is on the document, but this is about the, the community or private search at the moment.
Right, right.
So, so we'll post, postpone that, Dr. Joseph, and we can go to the, the timeline. Thank you.
Okay. Well, let's, we, we need to go back to the other things too. So for example, number five, has all of the board members made a, oh, excuse me, because there's no action that's needed on number five, which is schedule interviews with board members? Although I do have, I have a meeting already scheduled, yeah. So, so they're saying no action, no action item on this. But Dr. Dr. Joseph, can you explain number five? Because I've already been scheduled, and Commissioner Malloy's been scheduled, but you're saying, I'm looking at the document, it says no action item?
Yeah, so, so what this is, so I'm gonna be speaking with each individual board member.
Oh, okay.
It's about an hour, it's about an hour interview with each member, just to hear each individual board member's perspective on the search. The information that you share with me will be used to develop the leadership profile in addition to the 32 focus groups that we'll do within the community. So all of the commissioners' individual interviews, as well as what we get from the 32 focus groups, will come together to develop your, a draft leadership profile for you. So at this time, Tahera has reached out, I believe, and sent an email to all board members to begin scheduling. And I think she started scheduling those interview, those meetings beginning the end of September, as we, as we go through. So no action needed just yet, because Tahera's reached out to you all, board members are responding, and we'll follow up with board members, because it's important that we speak with all, you know, all of the board members as we pull together the leadership profile.
Okay. Yeah, so that, that sounds good. So we can, Dr. Joseph, we can start speaking about the timeline.
Sure, okay, so I'll just shoot down.
Well, there's some other things too, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. At the, Dr. Joseph, were you planning just to go through the list of things, or were you planning just to focus on the main things that you need answers from tonight?
Yeah, well, I can, I can scroll through just to let us know where we are, because a lot of this, some decisions were made, so I'll just go from five down.
Decisions, yeah, we need to come with some decisions.
Yeah, so know that the leadership, the, the interviews are being scheduled, thank you. I have spoken with Rahima about beginning to identify the focus groups, because the goal will be for you to give us a list of potential groups that you would like, and, and we need to know whether they'll be in person or whether they'll be virtual. Rahima and I have been coordinating, and we talked about if we could have this information by September 20th, if you agree to the new timeline, we'll be in, in good shape to schedule, you know, to make sure we have enough capacity, have people where they're supposed to be to do them virtually or in person. But the focus groups that you'll identify, we give you some sample suggested groups, so it could be interviews with the superintendent, administrators, principals, your union, leadership, support staff, teachers, students, community forums, board members, the PTO, PTO councils, business representatives, clergy, whoever you had, whoever you deem, we will go and meet with, whether it's individual meetings or group meetings, but we'll, you know, you'll put that list together for us to be able to do that. So Rahima and I have been in discussion on that, and we feel, we feel good in terms of making progress.
Dr. Joseph, we have a question from President Elliott regarding that.
Sure.
Could you just contrast the focus group, suggested groups of individuals versus the ones to do the online survey?
So, yeah, the online survey will be for your entire community. The same people that participate in the focus groups will also, will encourage them to complete the survey as well. Because the survey is, gives high-level information that'll let you know, you know, these are areas that community members are concerned about, or think are going well, things that need to, it'll give you that high level. The focus groups will give you more concrete narrative about some of the high-level stuff. So, so people would do both, they would do the survey and the focus groups, you'll identify key focus groups.
All right, thank you.
Sure.
So at what point, let me just ask this question, at what point are we going to streamline the number, the, the specific focus groups as well as folks that are gonna be doing the survey?
Yes, so, so, so we, today, 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 um, I suggested to Rahima that we have that done by September twentieth at the latest.
All right.
Do, I did receive some additional responses today, so I will put all those things together and share it back out to the board. So you all are clear around how much more work is needed before the twentieth and we can calendar it on another meeting.
Hey, thank you.
Uh, Dr. Joseph, very quickly, I just want to see if any of the commissioners on Zoom has any questions.
Sure.
Okay, seeing that, uh, thank you, Dr. Dr. Joseph.
No problem. So then you also have an online survey. And we sent you a copy of the uh, H Y A community and leadership profile. Um, and what we're asking in terms of an action by September twentieth as well is to determine six groups by which you would like the survey to be disaggregated. Um, so, so that way, when people take the survey, um, when we give you that report, it'll show up to six different groups. So you can see the perceptions of those six different groups and see where people feel, um, you know, have um, the same perceptions or what perceptions are different. Uh, that can be very informative, both to you as a board and super, potential superintendent candidates, uh, to see where people's perceptions are. Uh, so by the twentieth, if you just give us the six, the six groups by which you'd like the survey to be disaggregated, we'll load it in. And remember, you get the survey both in English and in Spanish at no cost. And if you want additional languages, um, uh, there is a fee, I believe it's four hundred and fifteen dollars for different languages, uh, but they're able to do that. And then, uh, we had a great meeting on Friday, uh, with your talented technology team. Uh, so we're, we're feeling good about the technology team understands what they need to do in terms of working and getting your website up. And we'll provide support to them to be able to do that. Uh, but, but the goal will be for you to have a public uh, website. And on that website, you would have uh, things such as the timeline for the search. Um, when you can put the link for the survey up and a link for the focus groups for people to be able to have an easy one-stop shop to go and sign up uh, for those or to take the survey. Uh, we'll be able to put the, the feedback, like when you get the leadership profile, things of that nature, you can put that up. Uh, once you get your finalists, it might be an opportunity for you to put your finalist pictures up with their biographies. Uh, you can live stream any events that will be open for the entire community. And um, those type of things would, would be there. And so we're, we're good there. Uh, at the last board meeting, you communicated that you want internal candidates to be treated uh, similarly to people who are external from the district. Uh, so that, that was taken care of.
I have a quick question, Dr. Joseph. When you, when you say that, is that like what? If it, they weren't treated the same, um, what is the other option? Like, what was the in-between?
Yeah, so what happens is there, there are districts that say, um, to the, to, to us, anybody who is qualified or has the credential to be a superintendent uh, in our district who applies, they automatically should be in your tier one. Um, so, and that happens. So then, then in that case, anybody from the school district who applies, who meets the credentials on paper would be presented in our, our tier one recommendation. Uh, the alternative is, um, if you have someone internally, um, who on paper meets the qualification, but through screenings and interviews, we don't feel are the, as strong as other candidates. Um, then, then we would place them in tier two. Uh, and then, and then justify why we did that.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. And then we talked about candidate expenses last time. And um, what we came up with at the last session was that you were fine in the first round of interviews, that they were virtual, so that way you wouldn't incur the cost of anyone coming. And then you said you would decide later based upon how many people were moving into the second and third round, if you, what the reimbursements would look like. So I think we, we landed on first round being virtual in terms of the interviews as to not pay those costs for them traveling in for that first round. And then the advertising package, you have package two. And then at the last time we talked, you also wanted us to advertise with ALAS, the Alliance of Latino Administrators and Supervisors, and also NAPSE, the National Association of Black School Educators. Uh, so when we advertise the package, which will go into um, top jobs for thirty days, it will also, and it will also go to those other entities. And then the background.
Dr. Joseph, not to cut you off, we, we have a question from Commissioner Griffin.
Yes.
Hello, guys. Uh, hi. I had, I just wanted to, my question basically, um, was referencing uh, the, the surveys. Um, you know, we, there's, there's a lot, we have a lot of church, um, churches here in Rochester. And they are, where, they're, they are, um, they play a big part of our educational process. I am wondering why we can't, or if we could possibly put it in like the church bulletins to, to, um, so that they are aware of um, the process as well. And probably that, that way too, we can probably pick up more parents, parent involvement.
Commissioner, Commissioner Griffin, they'll, they'll be having individual meetings and individual interviews. And so I, at that time, I think you should give that idea to them.
No, no, I, but he mentioned the surveys, so that's why I, I was saying, would that be something that could be doable at that time? I was just, I was asking him.
Yes, it is, it is, it is doable and it's a great, it's a great suggestion.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Okay, and then, and then you agreed that, uh, well, you know, we will conduct the background checks on the uh, finalists. Up to three background checks are included in the search fee. Uh, so that, that would take place when you identify your finalist. And then the board, the board will need to discuss the compensation range that you feel is appropriate. Uh, we suggest that the board think in terms of total compensation package on this item. Again, total type compensation includes salary, annuity, board pickup of non-obligatory, retirement payments, whole life insurance, auto allowance, and any other fringe benefits that has a monetary value attached to it, except for the insurance package and other benefits that generally are provided uh, to all administrators. And we need this information for the job posting and during the screening process. Uh, New York law requires a salary range be posted. Um, so again, knowing that, you know, individuals know that there will be a negotiation between the board and the superintendent for the final contract. But you do have to require, you do have to place a range uh, in the post. Uh, so that's something if we can get as soon as possible. Uh, it would be important for us as we post this. And then in the process, the board will need to discuss the expectations for residency in the community. You know, will the board require the new superintendent to live within the school district? If so, the board needs to understand uh, how such a requirement way impact, may impact the candidate pool. Again, you don't have to answer that now, but it does come up in negotiations. And it should, the board should be clear about your position on that, uh, when you get there.
Dr. Joseph, Dr. Joseph, very quickly, Commissioner Patterson had something that he wanted to ask.
Sure.
He, uh, my colleague put me on the spot here, but uh, um, to our council, um, could you put something together for us relative to salaries? You know, a, a package, um, look at other contracts and, you know, maybe give us a, a high and a low recommendation or, you know, something that we can give to the search uh, committee here?
Um, I can, I can absolutely uh, survey, um, what's out there in terms of, but you know, the, any information I have is what would be publicly available, superintendent contracts in New York or public. So, uh, you know, I can absolutely see what um, comparative school districts um, are paying their superintendent and relay that to the board, uh, if that's the board's desire.
That will kind of, uh, colleagues, my colleagues, that will save us the work if, uh, general counsel could put that together for us, eh?
Um.
Isaiah?
Yep. Me too.
I was told I gotta just jump in. Can you hear me?
Vice President LeBron?
Yeah, um, I think this is actually an executive session conversation to be had in terms of the compensation. Um, because we do need to look at our own trajectory of salaries, which are also public. Let me just be clear, but I do think there were reasons why certain people were paid certain amounts. And I don't want to publicly disclose those things here. Um, I'm not personally looking to our account, our general counsel to give us that information. But certainly if he wants to come with the previous last four salaries, um, I think that could be a start, but I do think it's going to be an executive session conversation. Thanks.
Can I respond to that real quick?
Yes, sir.
Sir?
No, I'm not asking you to respond to me unless you're responding to someone else. My comments are out there for the public record.
Commissioner Patterson?
Thank you. We were posed a question relative to amounts that are going to have to be added, you know, to the information that we put out there. So I'm simply asking our council, could they put something together for the board? So we can take a look at whether we look at it in executive session. I said nothing about not taking a look at it in executive session, but we have to give the search firm something. And so that's the question. Thank you.
Let me clarify my comments since, since people are not understanding and or it's not like landing for folks, that all I said was that this needs to be an executive conversation. And to clarify, not looking for legal counsel to tell us the number. The board sets that tone. If legal counsel wants to, as he also uplifted, this is all public record. The last four uh, superintendent salaries, that's fine. I don't need legal counsel to do that work for me. Again, it's all public information, but the board as a body needs to have a conversation in executive. I'm fully aware that the search know that before they go out and start recruiting. Because anyone looking for a job will want to know what the set salary is, especially a superintendent, which can range from state to state, city to city. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to go down the line from Commissioner Malloy down to President Elliott.
Thank you. Yeah, I think I would like some clarification just from legal, whether or not this needs to be an executive session, conversation, uh, any type of salary discussion. But because salaries for all public employees, it's public information. Um, are we going to be talking about this tonight, like potential salaries or a range? Is that something that would be a public discussion or does that have to take place in executive session?
So, so the board can, I mean, with few exceptions, the board can have almost any conversation publicly if they so choose. Um, I, I think, um, and my recommendation would be to at least have the, receive the initial uh, information about what ranges are in comparative districts or, or our superintendent, uh, prior superintendents. And then if the board uh, wants to have a conversation then publicly about what range the board has settled on um, as a director for the, for the firm, um, then so be it. But um, I would not have, as, because salary or is, is, tends to be, and, and really, I don't want to speak for the, for the firm. I'm sure they can comment on this themselves. It, it, there are so many factors that go into it. I mean, you're talking individual dependent, um, experience dependent. And it's so nuanced, the thing, um, to make a decision about a range on the fly tonight. Um, you know, I, I, I don't think would mean necessarily pertinent, but I mean, I can, if, again, if it's the board's will with all the expediency, uh, just collect some initial information about our prior superintendents and in comparative districts and get that to the board and you have an initial conversation on a range that the board gets comfortable with. And then have, and maybe the, the decision about the, the ultimate range in, in public if you so choose.
Yeah, and I can add, I can add too that, um, you know, as a firm, we can happily also give you districts that, you know, we think are comparable, uh, both in New York and, and nationally. Uh, just so you can see the range of salaries, uh, for sizes of districts to, to help. In addition, you know, to what your, your legal can do. I mean, we, we can easily get that to you this week.
Yeah. Commissioner Malloy?
Thank you. Yeah, and I know recently, just in the news, there's been a comparison done between um, various suburban school districts that surround us and compensation that superintendents receive. Um, so having those types, having that part of the conversation as well. I think there are superintendents who are earning close to what our superintendent um, is earning. Um, but much smaller districts, right? Um, so much more compensation. So I think that also needs to be included in our future discussions as well.
Yeah, and I, I also want to point the commissioners, uh, that we do have something inside of our, our board docs, uh, regarding this. And I also, and this is just for, for personal opinion, I believe if, if the search firm is willing to provide that, um, you know, we, we can easily see, you know, prior superintendents' uh, salary. Uh, but it would be great to see what the search firm uh, is providing to us. Commissioner Simmons?
I don't have any comments at this particular time.
You, uh, President Elliott? Okay, um, and, and so I know that the next thing, and, and you already started to speak about it, was the residency uh, expectation. And I just wanted to give a, a chance for our state monitor to make a comment.
Thank you, uh, Commissioner Santiago. Uh, residency is one of those items that is included in the negotiations of the future superintendent's uh, contract. Uh, in my case, in the past, when I was superintendent, I was required to live in the district. But again, that is part of the discussion that the board needs to have. Uh, there are some cases where, uh, if they're hiring someone from the outside, they may ask the person to live in the city. If they're hiring someone who is already within the neighborhood, they may allow the person to stay in the neighborhood. But if they're going to move, to move into the city. So that is part of the negotiations of the contract.
Uh, thank you, State Monitor. And, and I do know that this, uh, at the moment, we don't have to uh, fully make a decision at the moment. But uh, me personally, I, I do, do agree with, you know, the, the residency of, of them having to live in the city of Rochester. Um, but I don't think there's any more questions or comments. Oh, Commissioner Malloy?
I just would agree with that sentiment. I think that, um, it's important to have someone uh, be part of this community and, and live uh, where they work. Thank you.
Absolutely.
I agree with that also.
Okay.
Isaiah? I have my hand up and I was told to just jump in because you can't see on teams when my hand is raised.
Yeah, I can't see from here, so you, you can, you can go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to point out that we've actually only allowed one superintendent to not have residency. It's always been the district's practice to require the superintendents to live within the city of Rochester and be a resident of the city of Rochester. I still support that. There was only one exception made for one previous superintendent given extraordinary circumstances, why that was again allowed.
Thank you.
And I'd like to add, it's two. It's not one, but two superintendents.
Doctor, Dr. Joseph, uh, back up to you.
Thank you. And now the uh, the, the calendar. So, um, based upon our discussion last time, uh, we are proposing a new calendar. Uh, we had our planning meeting on the seventeenth, which was completed. Uh, we did meet with the tech team on August twenty-ninth. Uh, we changed the online survey. So we're recommending now that the online survey be sent out September twenty-seventh and then completed by October twenty-eighth, so one month. Um, pushing it out away from the start of school, uh, which was the concern that we heard in our last discussion on the twenty-seventh. Uh, then we're recommending that interviews and focus groups occur uh, over the course of two weeks between October fourteenth and October twenty-eighth. So during that time, we would schedule the thirty-two focus groups that you had, whether they be online or in person. Um, and, and this is where we've asked for the dates for September twentieth uh, to have the uh, disaggregated six groups that you'll have for your survey. So that way, if we have it by the twentieth, we'll be ready for the twenty-seventh. And then we've also asked to have your focus groups, uh, because it allows for the in-person sessions for the consultants that will need to be on the ground to get their tickets early as possible, uh, to mitigate potential, um, you know, cost of flights being, you know, more, more expensive. Uh, the earlier you can get it, the better. And then also, we can begin staffing the, um, you know, the, the session. So that's what we asked for in the twentieth, but we begin from the fourteenth through the twenty-eighth. Uh, we would begin advertising on November first officially. Uh, and the reason we'd begin advertising in November is because is because the advertisements go for about 30 days. And as we pushed the timeline back, we thought if we advertise in November, then it would push into December because we would get you a draft leadership profile on the 12th. It's not the last board meeting, forgive me, I'll take that out. We'd get you a leadership profile on the 12th, a draft, based upon the interviews that we did with individual board members and the 32 interviews that we do with the group, focus groups, on the 12th. And then on the 21st, we would, the board would vote to approve the leadership profile. So this would give you an opportunity to see the profile, make, give us feedback on any changes you'd like to make, allow your community to see the draft. And then, and then on the 21st, everybody feels good about that we've captured what it is you're looking for. You would vote to approve it. And then we would close the application deadline, December 15th, which is right before the holidays. But we feel that that gives people ample time to see the profile, apply, and then, and then have us begin reviewing. So we'd take off for December, and in December, we'd be reviewing. But we'd come back to you on January 14th, both with a, you know, an interviewing seminar to walk you through how interviews could go and what the final stages of the search would look like. And on the 14th, we'd be able to present a slate of candidates to you. And then the board would be able to decide who you would like to actually interview. Then on January 25th, potentially, the board would have its initial first round online interview with the second interview being narrowing down candidates around February 8th. Once that's done, the board would be able to announce semifinalists. And by the end of January, you'd be in position to have a community meet and greet if the board chose a, you know, that process where you, in fact, wanted to put one, two, or three candidates in front of the community. So once you did that, in February, the board would be able to go into negotiations and hopefully complete negotiations in March, which would give you time to either bring the superintendent on, you know, negotiating at that point with the superintendent, when the appropriate time to start would be. You know, it could be an instance where the person could come on as a consultant, could be an instance where the person would just start. I mean, I think that that would be a discussion between the board and the ultimate candidate to decide the best time to start. So this is the recommended adjustment we made based upon our August 27th discussion.
Thank you, Dr. Joseph. Before I go over to the other commissioners, I just want to say that I personally agree with this agenda, with this calendar. I think it gives us enough time to really focus on everything that we have to focus on. And also, it gives us a perfect time for a new superintendent, if a new superintendent is chosen, to take the position during the summertime as we prepare for the new school year. I'd like to open up the floor. I'll come down the row so everybody can give their comments. We'll start with Commissioner Malloy.
Thank you very much. This is a great calendar. Thank you so much for the recommendations. I'm pretty good with the proposed timeline for the most part. But I would like to see us as a board kind of reaching a middle ground on when a potential start date could occur. I want continuity and not too much disruption for our community or for our students. But I'd love for us as a board to have a decision made by late February or early March. And that wouldn't be when someone started, of course, because there would need to be negotiations around when they leave their district or their start, their actual start date. But I want us to be open to a start date in May with maybe for some type of onboarding to occur with the latest start date being June 1st. So that's just my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Malloy. Commissioner Simmons?
Yeah, the timeline in front of me right now looks like something I would be comfortable working with and continue conversation from there.
President Elliott?
Thank you. So I think I had a start, I did have a start date of March, I mean, a hire date of March. But is, I guess my question is, is June enough time for the superintendent, the hired superintendent to get orientation in terms of what's going on within the district? Is that enough time? Or should we say maybe do it in May to give, give a couple of months to work with the interim? And so that, you know, he could start, you know, when he starts July 1st, that he's able to, you know, he has more information, more learning and stuff under his belt than just maybe a month. I'm thinking, we've got, and I'm thinking, we've got, you know, the strategic plan, and we've got, and they probably, if they're interested, they probably are already, they will know our goals and strategic plan, what have you. But still, I'm thinking, is that enough time? And I guess I would defer that, Dr. Joseph, to you. One month versus two months in terms of, you know, acclimating if this person is not from this area? You know, I just want to make sure that he is onboarding as such that, you know, he becomes as familiar as he can with the inner workings of our district, you know, where, where things are, if you will, you know, and meeting the right people. And is a month enough time, or should we do it for two months?
You know, I would say it depends on the candidate. It depends on the candidate, and it also depends, you know, upon your budget because you'll be bringing somebody on as a consultant. So I think, I think once you get to, you know, once you get to know who the candidate ultimately will be, it's easier to make those decisions to figure out the timing. You know, the very seasoned sitting superintendent that had lots of experience would know how to appropriately come in, transition, you know, in the process of transitioning. You know, if it was a brand-new superintendent, they probably would need more time, particularly in a complex district like Rochester City.
Yeah, if I could follow up. You bring up a good point around season versus non-season. But I guess I would also ask if this is something, are we, I'd like to get the thoughts of the board around, you know, a candidate starting in, say, May as opposed to starting in June.
Very quickly before-
If I could just also say this too, I'm sorry. Remember now, that's graduations that are coming up in June and, you know, all those kinds of things. So, sorry about that.
Yeah, and before we get some feedback, I want to hand it over to the state monitor to give some feedback.
Thank you.
And then after that, because you can't see my hand, must not be able to.
Yeah, no problem.
Apologize, thank you.
Yes, usually those appointments are made around March, beginning of April. Because if you are going to hire a candidate from outside of New York State or outside of the county, you have to give the person the opportunity to meet with the staff in. But also, if you're going to require to live in the city, to find a place for him or the family or her and his family to move into the city. So there's few things that that person needs to take into consideration and that the board needs also to take into consideration.
And so I think, you know, just so we're not going down a rabbit hole and that we're focused on this timeline right here, I think that some of those, some of this conversation, some of those decisions, we won't be able to make until we know who our finalists are. And so, Dr. Joseph, just for some advice, do you think that we should have this conversation now or it would be better to have around that time?
I think it's better to have around that time, once you know who the candidates are.
Okay. Commissioner Griffin, you had something to say? Commissioner Griffin, hold on for a second. I'm still going to go, I'm going to come back to you. I'm going to go down the line to see. Right now, what we're focused on is if the commissioners agree with the timeline that's been proposed. And I'm going to go to Commissioner Patterson, then I'll go up to the online crew. Commissioner Patterson?
Thank you. You know, for me personally, I'm speaking for myself. The initial timeline that we had was fine with me, so even January. But I'm flexible, so I'm willing to meet, you know, partway. So even though, or half, everyone halfway. So even though you have this timeline here, I wouldn't want to go any further, you know, into, you know, you know, where we're saying June, July, or August, or... But, you know, for me, you know, personally, when you're talking about the end of February, March, you know, that's right around where we should be. But I wouldn't go any further into, you know, the summer. Like the independent monitor indicates, you know, they need time to gain housing and, you know, get used to the area also, let alone our school system. So the earlier, you know, in the year, you know, January 2025 would be best for, speaking for myself personally.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Patterson. I'll go to Vice President Lebron online.
Yeah, I'm okay with the, I couldn't see all the entire timeline that you presented, Dr. Joseph. But I gathered from what folks were saying that a June 1st or a May 1st potential start line. Yeah, if you can go down. I can't see past November 1st, November 21st, sorry.
Can you see now?
Yeah, if you can keep going. I just want to see where you end your timeline. Yeah. Yeah, I'm okay with the March to June timeframe. For me personally, I just have witnessed this district go through this process multiple, multiple ways, multiple times. And it's always in the middle of the school year. And that, I don't care what nobody says, is always going to be disruptive. When you bring in new leadership, people then are unfocused on the work, sort of the hype around this new individual, and just people not knowing which way they want to go. We've lost people that way. I just want to have a stable school year because our families deserve that. Regardless of what's going on at the leadership, the board is still the same. We hope that the administration currently still stays the same and minimize those ripple effects that it has when we have turnover. So for me personally, I would like them to start June 1st, but I'm okay with we hire them in the March timeframe, between March and June 1st to start.
Thank you, Vice President Lebron. Commissioner Griffin?
Thank you, guys. I just wanted to be first back on what President Elliott was saying in concern of the timeline. For, I think for me, I think, I think it could be, let me back up. For me, is it that, that is what the schedule that we have written, is it that it can't be changed? Or is it flexible? So once we have this, if we accept this calendar of the events, then that has, that is stuck in stone. We can't, that's not going to be, that can't change. Or it can be changed. Is it flexible? Because we don't know exactly how things are going to happen. So a lot of the questions, and go back to Commissioner Santiago's point, some things we just can't predict. So I'm just questioning, we're only in on this timeline. Yes, this timeline, we got this timeline and that timeline. But is it, that is stuck in stone? Because it may not work out that way. It may change anyway. Is that right?
Yeah, Commissioner Griffin, yeah, that's what we were discussing. And when we come to a point where we get more discussion and more details on candidates and where we are, have, coming back to this conversation to talk about, you know, where we'll go next. Because we don't know all the information until that time comes.
No, I was asking the doctor, you know, the expert in this, in this field, that is it, is it true that it does move? It does change? Because a lot of the questions that are being asked, we, some things, we can't, we are not going to have an answer for them until, until we get somebody in that, in that position or we have selected these people. So I mean, a lot of this, I'm just, I'm baffling with the way we're, what's happening in this conversation? Because everybody's saying the same thing, really.
Yeah, yeah. I'm not the expert, but I am paying attention to the conversation and what, and what we just agreed on. No, no, it's not being, I'm just, I'm just letting you know that, you know, what we agreed on was that we'll have the conversation later. I'll go over to Commissioner Simmons.
I was trying to just ask, I was asking him in his expertise, what, you know, what is happening. Everybody's directing a question to him. It was no disrespect to you.
No, I didn't, I didn't take it as that. I was just letting you know, I didn't take it as that. It's all respect. I was just letting you know that we, when we were having that conversation.
I've been listening, I've been listening, and I was asking him.
Thank you, Commissioner Santiago, for conceding the mic to me at this time. So I'm going to take this opportunity to weigh in on the conversation. What I will say, and I understand this is an ongoing, continuous improvement, and we recognize with project management that there's nothing set in stone, that you have an idea of where you want to go and the timeline and what you need to go. That's, those are extremely important elements that we consider. So we at least have a direction with the understanding that things outside of our control may change that direction, slow it down, speed it up, whatever that looks like. I think that's a comprehensive understanding, baseline, basic level understanding that we all have here at the dais at this point in time. In regards to that timeline, I do believe that, from my personal opinion, I would love to see, if we could, get the timeline more around the March, April. I think that gives us a little legroom. Again, that's my opinion of a middle ground, not too early, not too late, but may give us the time needed to make the appropriate decision. So that's, that's my position in this conversation at this time. Thank you.
I agree.
Okay, I, okay, that's, that's good conversation regarding that. Dr. Joseph, do you need anything else specifically from us?
No, no. Right now, if we can get the information by September 20th, which would be the information related to the focus groups and the information related to the survey, and then also the salary range. We're in good shape.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you so much, Dr. Joseph, for the work that you're doing and looking forward to, to the search being successful and the timeline being successful. Before, before you go, Dr. Joseph, we just have one more question from Commissioner Malloy.
Yeah, it's more to the board body. What determination did we reach on the salary range discussion and when that was going to occur as a board? So that we can give that information to Dr. Joseph.
I think, I think at the moment, just like when we were speaking about the either private or the public search, right now, we just have to get some more information from possibly our legal counsel and the, and the search firm. And, Dr. Joseph, is it, is it super urgent at the moment? Or can this wait until we also have the conversation about the public or private search?
The sooner, the sooner, the better because we need to post the job. And, you know, by New York state law, the posting should have the salary range on there.
Okay. And I know that we, we have to have some more deliberation and discussion about this. And so the hopes is that we, when, I don't know Clerk Rahima when our next meeting is, but if we could see if we could possibly move it to then.
Yes, we have a meeting next Tuesday on the 10th. It's for ESA in a special meeting.
Okay, and so then maybe, maybe in between the time, and I'm sure you'll have a conversation, you know, with the chairperson. I mean, in between that time, we can get that information. Is next Tuesday a good enough time for you, Dr. Joseph?
Yes.
Okay, then that sounds good. Are you all good? Any other comments or questions you would like to make?
Yes, I have a question or a comment to the doctor. If there is any additional questions that I may have, can I direct them right through Rahima?
Yes, please.
Oh, okay, thank you, sir. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Uh, Dr. Joseph, are you all good? Any other statements that you would like to make?
No, no, I'm looking forward to working with you all. I can tell you, there is, there is a lot of national interest in, in this role, I think. You all are doing great work. I think your focus on, on governance and, and your conversations that are centering, trying to get it right for your community, trying to get it right for your kids. I mean, all of that is excellent. I look forward to working with you and, you know, bringing a slate that you can, you know, select a strong candidate from.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Joseph. We appreciate you, and we'll see you possibly next Tuesday. With that being said, commissioners, please complete the board meeting survey. And if there's no other questions or comments, can I get a motion to adjourn the meeting? Moved by Commissioner Malloy, seconded by President Elliott. All those in favor? Everybody have a good night.